Boy Scouts are not.
The meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Stenwood Elementary School Singers under the direction of Marty Fusell.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the most bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there; oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was a beautiful job. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and parents, thank you so much for bringing your children out and to share their talents with us.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd also like to recognize the principal, Peggy Danmire is here, right over here on the left. Congratulations, what a great job.
Excellent, thank you so much. Item 2.02, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on November 3, 2016, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Strauss, seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor, raise your hand. Ms. Huff, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin. All those opposed, all those abstaining, Hines, Darnett Kovacs, and McElveen. That motion passes. 2.03, announcements. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to receive a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that's being discussed tonight, that information is on the table in the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board on FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. Why do you want to recognize that Carolyn Pitches from the City of Fairfax School Board is in the audience? Ms. Pitches, thank you for joining us. And I believe, I was told that our former school --
Ben Press.
Oh, Ben Press, that's what I was going to say. Mr. Press, thank you so much for joining us, our former School Board rep. Welcome, thank you so much. I call on Ms. Chu for tonight's announcements.
November 11, 2016 is Veterans Day. Veterans Day, formerly Armistice Day, is the anniversary of the armistice which was signed in the Forest of Compton by the Allies and the Germans in 1918, ending World War I after four years of conflict. At 5:00 a.m. on Monday, November 11, 1918, the Germans signed the armistice, and order was issued for all firing to cease, so the hostilities of the First World War ended. This day began with a laying down of arms, blowing of whistles, impromptu parades, and closing of places of business. All over the globe, there were many demonstrations, no doubt the world had never before witnessed such rejoicing. Veterans Day is observed annually in the United States in honor of all of those, living and dead, who served with the U.S. Armed Forces. The School Board directs school personnel to provide students with instructional activities that honor veterans and recognize the role of the military in American democracy. Many schools have special events to which they invite veterans and members of the school community on active-duty military. In addition, November 14 through 18 is American Education Week. American Education Week was established in 1921 by the National Education Association to raise public awareness of the importance of public education in America. This year's theme, "Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility," reminds all Americans of the importance of public education and offers the opportunity to celebrate public education and honor those who ensure that every child receives a quality education. As part of the observance, community leaders are invited to serve as educators for a day in order to get a glimpse of a day in the life of a school employee. American Education Week features a special observance on each day of the week, including parents, education support professionals, and substitute educators. And finally, November 13 through 19 is Geography Awareness Week. Geography Awareness Week is an opportunity to focus on geography as a critical component of a 21st century education. The 2016 theme, "Explore the Power of Parks," focuses on developing spatial thinking through maps, a critical skill that students can develop as they learn geography, and earth and environmental sciences. Geography Awareness Week was established by Presidential Proclamation in 1987 to underscore the importance of geographic understanding to ensure our nation's economic competitiveness, national security, environmental sustainability, and livability of communities in the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. I now call on Mr. McElveen for a resolution honoring members of the Human Resources Advisory Committee.
So I'm very proud tonight to be reading the resolution honoring the work of the HRAC. Whereas the work of the Human Relations Advisory Committee, HRAC, dates back to at least the 1980s, and two members of the HRAC have served for more than a decade, and whereas the HRAC has assisted the School Board in fulfilling its commitment to equal opportunity and nondiscrimination as essential components of educational excellence, and whereas the HRAC has had numerous chairpersons that are well-known within the Fairfax County community, including Andy Shalall, May Cader, the late Charlie Dane, Judy Farabaugh, and school year 2015-16 co-chairs Shasta Keating and Trung Nguyen. And whereas, as a result of the Board's charge of school year 2009-10, the HRAC worked with the Office formally titled Equity and Compliance to enhance the performance of school-based human relations committees and improved methods for obtaining feedback from the economically challenged and socially marginalized, and whereas HRAC has made certain that every school in the division has a human relations liaison to coordinate efforts within the entire school community to implement the five standards of good human relations: inclusion, diversity, modeling, partnering, and communication. Now, therefore, the Fairfax County School Board appreciates the many years of service and the numerous contributions of the members of the HRAC, and will continue developing and improving programs to support good human relations, the portrait of a graduate, and the mission of FCPS. I so move.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous.
And at this time, I would like to invite members of the HRAC to join me at the dais for a photo with the Board. So if you can come through this little gate here into the semicir-
Item 2.05, Recognition of School Psychology Awareness Week. I call on Mrs. Corbett Sanders for the recognition.
The theme for the 2016 School Psychology Awareness Week is Small Steps Change Lives. The goal is to highlight how taking small steps can build greater successes and develops the academic and social-emotional skills students need to promote personal achievement, growth, and resilience, as well as a sense of belonging and well-being. School psychologists work in all educational settings to positively impact the academic and social-emotional development of students through the provision of mental health services that build resilience, promote developmental assets, and foster good citizenship. Their most important responsibility is to ensure the welfare and safety of students. To fulfill that responsibility, school psychologists strive to attain and maintain high standards of empirically-based practice and to promote professional ethics in their daily work. School psychologists collaborate with teachers, parents, and school personnel to create safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments for all students. School psychologists collaborate with school teams to address students' learning and behavioral problems through implementation of multi-tiered prevention and intervention strategies. They suggest improvements to classroom management strategies or parenting techniques, bring knowledge of assessment and data collection to measure progress and outcomes of interventions, and encourage practices that effectively promote student learning and mental wellness. The School Board appreciates and recognizes our school psychologists and the support they provide to the students of FCPS. At this time, I would like to invite the school psychologists who are in the audience this evening to join me at the dais for a photo with the Board.
So if you would, body to body, body sideways, and kind of bringing yourselves together. Bring yourselves just a little tighter. You can bring yourselves a little tighter. There we go, perfect. Come on in, come on in. That's perfect, okay. So you're going to be looking up here for two, please. Ready? One and two. Perfect, thank you so much.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who've come out tonight to speak to us. Tonight, ten citizens have signed up to address the Board. I will start with Monique Barudy, to be followed by Catherine Weber, to be followed by Robert Rigby. Ms. Barudy?
It's working. My name is Monique Barudy, and I'm an FCPS graduate and parent. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the premier workforce section of your strategic plan. Strategy number eight states FCPS intent to recruit and retain high-quality employees who are valued, respected, and rewarded for their efforts. Policy 1501 states in part, "The School Board shall inform the community about policies, plans, and programs of the school system, and additionally, the School Board shall invite and encourage the advice and counsel of county citizens." I've spoken a couple of times about FCPS unwillingness to encourage the advice and counsel of county citizens regarding the changes to policy 1450, but what I'd like to address tonight is your lack of engagement with one of your most valuable resources, your employees. They spend hours and hours every day with our children and have valuable input to provide regarding how this policy should be implemented. Unfortunately, you have failed to take advantage of this amazing resource and have chosen instead to alienate a large portion of them. When policy 1450 was amended, the community was assured that nothing would change and that a consultant would be hired to help answer the many questions that were being asked about the implementation of this policy. Despite claims that nothing has changed and that the implementation of the policy is on hold, I can assure you that's not what we're experiencing as parents. I spoke to one FCPS employee regarding the changes to the family life education lessons that have resulted from the changes to policy 1450. This employee was appalled to learn of the sexual acts they would have to describe to students as part of the new curriculum. This employee specifically stated, quote, "When I signed a contract to come work for FCPS, I didn't sign on for this." One would think that the consultant would meet with FCPS employees to get their input about how best to implement the new policy to make a safe environment for all FCPS students. Unfortunately, a search of the FCPS website and Board Docs for the consultant that was hired, Jeff Poirier, returns not a single reference. But, a Google search of Jeff Poirier and FCPS results in a report by FCPS Pride about a meeting with Superintendent Garza, Glisten, P Flag, students, teachers, administrators, and staff on June 22 of 2015, during which they were given Jeff Poirier's name as the consultant that had been hired and an invitation to meet with him two months later in August. Apparently, FCPS is willing to engage students, teachers, administrators, and staff on this topic, but only some of the community. It is no wonder that the spring 2016 employee engagement survey results showed that only fifty percent, excuse me, fifty-eight percent of responding employees are hopeful about the future of FCPS. You overwork them, underpay them, alienate them, and disregard the truly valuable input they have to share. I again urge you to repeal the changes to policy 1450 and start down a path of true community engagement, encouraging the advice and counsel of county citizens and employees. Thank you.
Catherine Weber, to be followed by Robert Rigby, to be followed by Ben Knackhavnit.
Hello, I'm Catherine Weber, and I am a Fairfax County resident, parent, and educator of 25 years, teaching in public and private schools, and an FCPS graduate. I like to speak to creating a premier workforce and the various ways in which FCPS is instead promoting a hostile work environment. In the forced allowance of males to use female bathrooms, showers, and locker rooms without parental notification or consent, and in complete disregard for the needs of the vast majority of students, a hostile environment has been created. While nine of 10 developing teenagers grow out of gender confusion if nurtured, supported, and counseled, chemical treatment and surgical removal of vital body parts is being promoted instead. Students have been coerced to recognize a false reality and science and deny the ability to object to the subjective whims of those in authority, creating a hostile environment. There is now promotion of soft porn and harmful behaviors in the FLE, and the immoral cultural indoctrination of children as young as five years old into a false belief that gender is irrelevant. Suspension and loss of privileges are threatened for any student not submitting themselves to the oppressive regulations outlined in the punishment guidelines in the updated SRNR Act. Let me brag about our program here in Fairfax County. FCPS offers Latin language classes at almost all of our secondary and high schools and several middle schools. Thousands of students take Latin. Most of our schools have chapters of the National and Virginia Junior Classical League, and hundreds of our students attend and compete in the state convention in late November in just a couple of weeks. We even have our own quiz bowl competition called Caretamen, in which FCPS teams excel, and many of our students take and win awards in the national Latin exam. Our students learn language structure, reading skills in Latin, ancient culture, mythology, and history, and read classical authors such as Caesar, Catullus, Virgil, and Cicero in the original. FCPS has one of the largest and healthiest Latin programs in the country. We are a shining star. Now for dual enrollment. Adding dual enrollment Latin IV to our course offerings will enhance what we can offer our advanced students. For many students, dual enrollment has the advantage that they can participate in a rigorous, demanding, and instructive course throughout the year and earn a college credit without the stress of sitting for another high-stakes test in the spring. I'm not suggesting that dual enrollment take the place of AP. Rather, it will offer an alternative for students who are overloaded with many tests for which they must cram in May. Students who do not typically do well on such exams will have the chance to demonstrate their achievement at a high level during the school year and still be rewarded for it. The proposed GPA boost acknowledges that also. The motto of my school, the world's greatest high school, is "Ad astra per aspera," which means "To the stars through struggles." Dual enrollment Latin will enable our students even more to reach the stars. So, to take an oft-used quote from Horace, "Dum loco morte fugit in veda itas, carpe diem." While we speak, an envious age will have slipped away. Seize the day and add dual enrollment Latin to our course offerings. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ben Nakhavennet, to be followed by Kimberly Beg and George Albert.
Evening. Thank you for having me here to discuss my views on policy 1450, non-discrimination. I understand that Title IX prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex in educational programs that receive financial assistance. The current administration has determined that this phrase is ambiguous and is in a unilateral move without the passing of legislation from Congress has interpreted to cover discrimination on the basis of both genetic sex and gender identity. I'm very disappointed that there's a huge disconnect between the citizens who have paid our taxes, like my wife and I, and the actions of the board regarding Title IX. We live in a democracy and have a constitution with checks and balances. Eleven states have sued the federal government regarding Title IX. Just last week, the Supreme Court decided to hear the case. The Supreme Court previously issued a stay allowing the Virginia School Board to maintain its policy that protects student privacy in communal facilities. Before I came to this meeting, I looked at my tax payments just to remind myself of my vested interests in Fairfax County. The 2017 budget shows that schools receive almost 53% of the funds, $2.1 billion. By using our money, the members sitting on the board need to remember 2.1 billion times that you work for the tax-paying citizens like my wife and me, not the other way around. Therefore, it baffles me, Patty Hines, since you were the chairperson, how can the board rush to approve a policy which was adamantly not wanted by the parents?
Ms. Nakhavennet, I need to remind you that you signed up to talk about premier workforce?
Yes, and I have, I will get to have a minute and I have to go. For example, the board had received thousands of emails, and there were armed police and security guards at your meetings because the community was clearly against you. Patty Hines even quoted that there's always people who have a difference in opinion about what we do. There are people in the community, particularly parents, who have questions about what it means for their children, that there's an obligation to answer those questions so that parents have the information that they need to understand what's going on in their kids' schools. I truly believe in that. If you think about what you said and your actions did align with the tax-paying citizens and the 2.1 billion reasons, then the citizens will not have those types of questions because we will understand your actions. In conclusion, I want you to think 2.1 billion times about the decision that the community wants and overturn your unwanted and illegal policy. Election day is next week. I want to remind you that some voters will use the Mills Tax as a referendum on your actions. And in reference to the qualifications of our superintendent, I recommend that person that you're looking for has critical thinking skills and can offer a different perspective instead of being a yes person. Thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Beg, to be followed by Mr. Albert, to be followed by Stella Morabito.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address this board. I live in Herndon with my husband and our five children, ages two to 10. I'm a busy lawyer, we have a busy home, and yet I felt obligated to take the time to be a voice for Fairfax County's children. The selection of a new superintendent is a momentous occasion. I've been in Washington for many years and have seen what well-funded pressure groups can do. The effort to mainstream the transgender agenda has been incredibly successful, and tragically, many confused and vulnerable young people have been convinced that they were born into the wrong body. The activists have ignored the medical experts, like former top psychiatrist at Johns Hopkins, Dr. Paul McHugh, who says that to support the transgender agenda is to promote and collaborate with mental illness. Those pushing this extreme agenda convince young people to take controversial drugs and hormones, even to mutilate their bodies through surgery. Little wonder their suicide rate is 20 times higher than the general population. It's tragic. This board has received a letter from four associations of medical professionals urging you to stop promoting transgenderism in children. They are the American College of Pediatricians, the Association of American Physicians and Surgeons, the Christian Medical and Dental Associations, and the Catholic Medical Association. Together, they represent over 20,000 physicians and healthcare professionals. These are professionals who care about science, not political correctness. Truth does not become less true when a minority speak it, and falsehoods do not become facts when a majority believe them. Our new superintendent must care about science and truth, not political correctness. He or she should affirm the beauty in differences among our children, including the little boy who likes to cook and dance and the little girl who likes to play baseball and climb trees. I was that little girl. Above all, our new superintendent must have the courage to fight for what's best for our children, even and especially when that means challenging the fashionable, yet radical ideas of today's activists. Thank you.
George Albert, to be followed by Stella Morabito, to be followed by Laura Murphy.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight about early childhood education. I'm speaking tonight because I believe that all of our children should receive a free, high-quality, equitably funded education that includes affordable, high-quality pre-K, subsidized where necessary. Who among us would disagree? Who among us would disagree? As the county and school boards begin conversations about the fiscal year 2018 budget, we must ensure that this equitable access to preschool is a budget priority. The preschool access gap is directly responsible for a significant gap in kindergarten readiness, which follows our children all through their FCS careers. A strategic plan to close the preschool access gap within a short timeframe with budget goals for each of the years must begin in fiscal year 2018. I call on the superintendent and the school board to work with the Fairfax County government to make closing the preschool access gap a top strategic budget priority this year and every year until all children, all of our children, enter our schools prepared to succeed. Each year, almost 1,000 Fairfax children qualify for Head Start but end up on the waiting list because there are not enough classrooms. Not fixing this is consequential. For example, think about the achievement gap. Achievement gap is a high priority in the FCPS strategic plan, very high priority. But student outcomes continue to show stubborn socioeconomic gaps. The most recent report, despite all this effort, on FCPS state test scores and on-time graduation rates still show no appreciable gains. And yet, we ask ourselves why these gaps are so stubborn when we have in front of us a powerful tool to address those with this gap, equitable access to pre-K. It is possible to close that gap, but we must all put a high priority on it. Preschool is the best investment we can make in the public sector. Decades of research show that every dollar on a high-quality pre-K saves $7 later in reduced remediation, higher on-time graduation rates, lower incidence of crime, less teen pregnancy, better lifetime health, and employment outcomes, and on and on. So I call on you to provide the funds, not just the plan, but the funds, beginning in the 2018 budget year to close this gap. Let's target our dollars and our efforts toward these neediest of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Stella Morabito, to be followed by Laura Murphy, to be followed by Meg Kilgannon.
Hello. My name is Stella Morabito. I'm a writer, and I've been a tax-paying resident of Fairfax County for several years. I've also studied totalitarian systems, and I served for several years as an intelligence analyst with a focus on propaganda and media analysis. So I'm speaking tonight because I believe most of what we're dealing with in this policy 1450, the gender identity policy, is political propaganda, pure and simple. For me, that's the biggest issue. Propaganda like this is really dangerous. It's basically what it is, is a program that manipulates people through psychological conditioning. The goal is always groupthink that empowers elites and disempowers just about everybody else. And what interests me most is how violently this policy disrupts the actual structure of our language.
I'm sorry, again, I need to remind you what you signed up to speak about tonight.
Gender identity policies.
According to my list, you signed up to talk about consideration of approval of SAC recommendations. We didn't have gender identity policy on our agenda tonight.
Well, it's all connected. And it's definitely connected with the whole, I mean, the whole thing. I think we're dealing, when we're dealing with any of these kinds of policies, it really does assault language. It assaults people's ability to communicate, and especially with the silencing tactics that are inherent in these policies, the punitive measures when a student maybe has to, you know, go along with certain things. It's a very old tactic. It's called divide and conquer, and manipulation of language is key in all of this. And, you know, I am going to have to go back to gender identity because it's based on a premise, the whole policy that is up for discussion, well, definitely up for discussion continually, includes a premise that sex is assigned at birth, and it's a false premise that is built into school policy and into all these programs, and it forces everybody to deny their own physical reality. It applies universally. It de-sexes everybody. This is mind hacking, and it's mind hacking on a grand scale. And I've got a little note from George Orwell on that sort of thing. If thought corrupts language, language can also corrupt thought, and I think in every policy that has to be considered. A bad usage can spread by tradition and imitation even among people who should and do no better. So, you know, it's a very hostile environment for learning that's been created by that policy, such policies. It's anti-conversation, it's anti-frenchip, and I think if we know what's good for real learning, we won't vote for it. Thank you.
Laura Murphy, to be followed by Meg Kilgannon, to be followed by John Kochko.
Members of the school board, Dr. Garza. All families, including those in the Head Start program, deserve assignments reflecting reasonable standards of decency and appropriateness. AFCPS teacher wrote the following, "This brings tears to my eyes. I want you to know that I forwarded your emails to my administrator into the English Department Chair. They need to know. They need to know that after 27 surgeries and confined to a wheelchair for the past 18 years, this high school junior has endured many obstacles and challenges. After diagnosed with spina bifida at birth, this family understood that everyday life would be different for their son, but nothing can prepare them for what happened this past summer. In early August, this high school junior consulted a FCPS summer reading list. The review of one particular book appealed to him. This is a story of friendship and acceptance and testing strength in an uncertain future. The main character in The Last Leaves Falling suffered from ALS, and with the help of his online friends, did the world a favor and ended his life through teen-assisted suicide. One boy responds, 'People like that should effing die. I mean, what's the point? He should just end it. He's taking up our space, breathing our air. There's too many people draining our resources. They should do us a favor.'" While this junior never considered his life to be a burden, after reading this book, he began to second-guess himself. His mother writes, "My son was a mess when discussing this book. The character in the book ended his life because he was a burden to his mother. After many tears, his Fairfax mom told her son, 'It's not the case with him. He never thought the burden on us before seeing it in this book. He thanked me so sincerely today for all we do for him. It broke my heart to hear him all but apologize for the extra things we do for him. I fear exposure to this book will always make him question that now. I'm off to return this book to the library and be done with it. We need a happy book and ice cream." While the book did illustrate the value of friendship, it left the reader with a distorted view of human life and children with disabilities. To their credit, staff took action and offered an acceptable solution, only the solution was not county-wide. Fortunately, there's an epilogue, only not by the book's author, but by this amazing young man. He just completed the Army 10-miler in a wheelchair with his proud mother and father behind. He also received a national record in shot put and participates on the Fairfax Falcons Wheelchair Basketball League that's ranked 14th in the nation. I shared with this mother, this is a story that all FCPS children should be assigned. Whether books include teen-assisted suicide, sexually explicit material, or excessive violence, parents and students at a minimum deserve warning.
reasonable standards of decency and appropriateness. AFCPS teacher wrote the following: "This brings tears to my eyes. I want you to know that I forwarded your emails to my administrator and to the English department chair. They need to know. They need to know that after 27 surgeries and confined to a wheelchair for the past 18 years, this high school junior has endured many obstacles and challenges. After diagnosed with spina bifida at birth, this family understood that everyday life would be different for their son, but nothing can prepare them for what happened this past summer. In early August, this high school junior consulted FCPS summer reading list. The review of one particular book appealed to him. This is a story of friendship and acceptance and testing strength in an uncertain future. The main character in The Last Leaves Falling suffered from ALS and with the help of his online friends did the world a favor and ended his life through teen-assisted suicide. One boy responds, 'People like that should effing die. I mean, what's the point? He should just end it. He's taking up our space, breathing our air. There's too many people draining our resources. They should do us a favor.'" While this junior never considered his life to be a burden, after reading this book, he began to second-guess himself. His mother writes, "My son was a mess when discussing this book. The character in the book ended his life because he was a burden to his mother." After many tears, his Fairfax mom told her son, "It's not the case with him. He never thought the burden on us before seeing it in this book. He thanked me so sincerely today for all we do for him. It broke my heart to hear him all but apologize for the extra things we do for him. I fear exposure to this book will always make him question that now. I'm off to return this book to the library and be done with it. We need a happy book and ice cream." While the book did illustrate the value of friendship, it left the reader with a distorted view of human life and children with disabilities. To their credit, staff took action and offered an acceptable solution, only this solution was not county-wide. Fortunately, there's an epilogue, only not by the book's author, but by this amazing young man. He just completed the Army 10-miler in a wheelchair with his proud mother and father behind. He also received a national record in shot put and participates on the Fairfax Falcons Wheelchair Basketball League that's ranked 14th in the nation. I shared with this mother, this is the story that all FCPS children should be assigned. Whether books include teen-assisted suicide, sexually explicit material, or excessive violence, parents and students at a minimum deserve warning. Let's be clear, this is not about censoring or banning. It's about notifying. Regulation 305 included high school only because FCPS never imagined that books containing these topics would ever be assigned to middle or elementary schoolchildren. Please amend the regulation and make it apply to grades K through 12. Carefully vet each and every assigned or recommended book. Identify books containing sensitive material. Offer an acceptable alternative. And finally, restrict those books that don't comply with reasonable standards of decency and appropriateness. Our students deserve nothing less. Thank you."
Thank you. Meg Kilgannon to be followed by John Kochka.
I'm going to yield my time to Nasir Khatir.
All right. When you're finished, would you please give your information to our clerk so she'll have your full name? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak my voice tonight. My name is Nasir Khatir. I came here tonight to talk about secondary school courses offering. As things are now, my family will not be able to enjoy high school in Fairfax. I came to this country 30 years ago from the Middle East, and I'm a Muslim. I'm a citizen of the United States right now, thank God. I heard a lot about America, the freedom of speech, freedom of religion, interested to come here. Until recently, I was a single income. My wife had to get a job for $8 an hour in a restaurant to be able to support the family that I, her and I, running. Last year, I heard about policy 1450. I had to quickly take my kids off to a private school. This school is charging me a lot of money, charging me $140 for a very simple jacket with a logo. I have $70 for the pants. Nevertheless, I have two aunts lives in Syria. Half of my family, my mom's side of the family butchered by Assad. The other half is a refugee in Jordan. I support my mom in Akaba, Jordan. I support my wife's family in Lebanon, southern Lebanon. I, I'm really speechless, but I want to really talk about policy 1450. I decided to move to Fairfax County because it offers the best standard of living and the best education, and thank you so much for what you guys are doing. I really appreciate that. Now, I kind of regret doing that because of that policy. I paid top dollar for my house. I commute. I suffer like everybody else here. 45 seconds. I just want to say, the public schools are for everybody, not for me right now. I have a son, a five-years-old son in kindergarten. I don't know what's his future because I really can't offer to send him to private school like my two twin daughters. But I say, public schools are for everybody. I want to ask everyone here, who gets to decide who's right or believe matters the most in Fairfax County? I just want to say, 4.6% of Fairfax County are Muslims. They share my same views. This policy completely against my religious beliefs, and I would like that I consider my First Amendment right as a citizen. I would recommend the repealing of policy 1450. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John Kochka.
The best way to encourage a premier workforce is to teach our kids to tell the truth. Are they credible in a job interview? Do they do what they say? The big lie by this school board happened on September 23, 2015, when I sent John Torrey of the Fairfax County Public Schools a Freedom of Information request asking, "Please send me all the discrimination complaints by transgender students in Fairfax County prior to May of 2015." Brandon Reeves wrote me on October 13, 2015, stating, "There are no responsive documents to your request for copies of any discrimination complaints by transgender students in Fairfax County. Fairfax County Public Schools does not track the number of students identified as transgender." An informed source told me there are less than 20 transgender students in the entire Fairfax County program, 186,000 students. On May 7, 2015, members of the Fairfax County School Board claimed that policy 1450 was paramount for the protection of transgender students who were routinely bullied. Mr. McElveen, Mr. Moon, Ms. McGlothlin, and six other board members deceitfully built a straw man of bullying as a justification for policy 1450. After policy 1450 was passed on May 7, 2015, the Fairfax County Public Schools hired Jeff Poyet to draft regulations during the summer of 2015. Mr. Foster, who were the Fairfax County purchasing agents negotiating Mr. Poyet's contract? Ms. McGlothlin, can you produce a written request for proposal, and when was it issued? Mr. McElveen, what criteria were used to evaluate Mr. Poyet's proposal? Ms. Hines, as required by Virginia Contracting Code Section 2.2 through 6, please provide proof that two or more offerers existed and were interviewed for this work. Ms. Corbett Sanders, where was the public notice for this request for proposal? Ms. Kofax, who were the final two bidders selected under Section 2-2 through 1132 for negotiation? Ms. Strauss, can the board produce a copy of Jeff Poyet's contract? Ms. Evans, how much was Mr. Poyet paid? Ms. Evans, what did Superintendent Garza know, and when did she know it? I find it troubling. Our elected officials cannot answer simple, straightforward questions about their activities, how they recklessly endangered our children and spent our tax dollars. Nine members of the Fairfax County School Board have willfully and habitually lied to the public. They used unethical contracting practices to present a consultant who worked for the Obama administration and the Clinton Foundation. I strongly recommend, these Solons of Sodommy, follow the leadership of Superintendent Garza and resign immediately. They are unfit to serve.
Thank you. We turn to 3.02, Student Representative Matters.
Chairman Evans, I'd like a point of order.
Yes.
I do think it's very important that the audience, both here in the auditorium and those at home, should at least have a factual statement from this board, which is that the board has taken no action at all about any draft regulations on 1450. So the presentation that any of us have approved contracts, that we've withheld information from the public, I think it's really important that we at least be clear on the record because while I do support and appreciate citizen participation, we need to make sure as a board that the public at least understands that if there is misinformation out there in the public, we need to help clear that up. There has been no action by this board. We have not drafted, as a board, any regulations. Whatever work the superintendent has done, she operates this school system.
Ms. McGlothlin, I appreciate that clarification.
And all we've done is updated a policy that we don't discriminate.
Again, this is not on our agenda for tonight. I know a number of members of citizen participation spoke to that policy, but it's not on our agenda to discuss tonight.
It's not that it's on our agenda, but I do think, Ms. Evans, we have a duty and responsibility to at least make sure that the public is clear about what's factual and what is perception.
Ms. Chu.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you again to all the speakers who came tonight. First, I would like to welcome Boy Scout in the audience from Troop 1970 in Western Virginia, working on his citizenship and the community badge. If you could please stand, as well as other Boy Scouts. Thank you. And I'd like to welcome a former Boy Scout student representative, inspiration of mine, Ben Press in the audience today. Thank you so much, Ben, for being here. I'm going to try to keep my comments very brief, but you were and you still are a huge inspiration to me and my career, so thank you for coming today. Again, I'm going to try to keep my comments brief as the first quarter ends. I hope all students have had a wonderful start to the year. Yes, the student information system where your grades are is not currently available. Just a note to all the students out there who had contacted me, this is for the purpose of teachers to be able to put all their grades in, and so don't stress out. I'm sure all your grades will be fine and that you can continue to have a great school year. In addition to the handful of student voters out there, as well as all other citizens in our community who are voting, I urge you to vote in favor of the meals tax referendum. The 4% meals tax referendum can provide a huge pool of resources from which our county can provide a better benefit for our students, and a lot of the resources will be dedicated to our students, our classrooms. And I truly urge the students to keep informed on this issue online and vote in favor of this meals tax referendum. Those are all my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Item 3.03, Strategic Plan, highlight video on Goal 3, and I call on Dr. Garza for the introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, as you all know, this is our second year to present reports to the board following every goal. I believe the work has certainly been well-received by the board and our community, the ability to identify what our vision and future of the vision, the direction we're headed, and then progress reports from the staff on this strategic plan. So tonight, we will have the first report for this school year. It will be the Goal 3 Premier Workforce Report. I will invite Dr. Chase Ramey, who will be coming up after a short video. He'll be presenting the report. But I have to acknowledge, and I'm sure as he will in just a moment, our wonderful HR team. I know he'll introduce them in just a minute, who are sitting on the front row. But we also had quite a number of other leadership team members and others throughout the organization who contributed to this report. It certainly is a Herculean effort. I will acknowledge because these folks are working hard, certainly getting schools started, and then completing this report, so I think you'll find it very useful and beneficial. We also are starting tonight with our first video based upon a school board retreat. You all had asked for these videos. They used to be Spotlight on Learning. You asked, and I thought it was a great idea, to have the videos highlight work that's going on in the field related to the report that's being presented. So this is our first one tied to the report, and so we're looking forward to sharing a little bit of some of the work that will be reflected a little bit more deeply in the presentation later. I also want to point out to the board, also to the members of the public that might be watching, is tonight, we will have the presentation. We ask for the board to, for their questions and comments, we're primarily to be focused on clarification because Monday, we will have a more in-depth discussion about the content of the report. This is the typical way we present these to the board. We have a presentation, a fairly lengthy presentation, then an opportunity to work session for the board members to delve a little bit more deeply into the contents of the report, and then final action at a subsequent board meeting. So the work session on this particular presentation will be this coming Monday, so it's quickly, you know, it's just a short few days away, and you'll have an opportunity to go more in-depth in some of the report items. I want to reflect, too, about three years ago, four years ago, the board, you should not get classified reports, and you'll see that is included as a regular item in the report, as well as some other information. So we're going to start with the video, and immediately thereafter, Dr. Chase Ramey will come up and make the presentation on Goal 3 Premier Workforce. So roll the video, please. Thank you.
In an ever-competitive job market, the methods of recruiting and hiring top talent are changing. We're going to look at two unique ways FCPS is finding and hiring today's top educators. Hiring new teachers is a process ordinarily thought of, something that takes place over summer break. But through the process of early hiring, teacher contracts are offered in the spring for the upcoming school year. This gives school staff and new employees a lot more time to get acquainted.
The earlier that we are able to recruit and hire teachers, it allows us more opportunities to conduct more interviews, to make sure that we're getting the right fit for our school that meet the needs of our students.
Math teacher Shannon Gray was offered a job in the spring for the upcoming school year. She says this process helped reduce the stress of preparing for her new career.
Actually, before I accepted my offer of employment with Mr. DeRose, he made me know or let me know that this was my new home and that I was free to ask any questions, reach out to anyone, and I would be helped. And so that was really cool because until the first day of school, in my mind, I thought that I was still kind of a guest, and that was absolutely not the case. So it was really cool to know that before last school year ended, I was welcomed aboard as a team member.
As a principal, when we're able to recruit quality staff members at an earlier timeframe, it allows us to shift the focus from staffing on to what matters most and how do we support and develop our teachers in the classroom.
And then when I got more serious about accepting the offer here, I came back. I met some more teachers. I met with an instructional coach, and those were things that my student teaching experience didn't offer me.
Teacher retention also benefits with the early hire process. If a teacher has a successful first year, that teacher is more likely to stay with FCPS in the long run. Competition among surrounding school districts is also a factor. With the early hire process, FCPS can offer a prospective employee a contract well before other school districts. Finding new teachers in today's competitive market means recruiting through social media and face-to-face visits on college campuses.
Our team is working hard to ensure that we have a wide variety of approaches and strategies to bring top talent to the organization. We've been trying some very different things and trying to be innovative in our approaches. One of the things that we attempted this year is we sent a team to Puerto Rico to try and identify top candidates for some of our hard-to-fill areas such as immersion teachers, Spanish immersion teachers.
I think we went down there and had eight vacancies we knew we needed to fill, and when school started, we had filled 10 vacancies as two others had popped up. So it was very successful. And the other really great thing is, an 11th candidate is actually going to be a long-term sub right here in this building.
I think our HR team really looked outside the box and put together this recruiting trip to Puerto Rico. It enabled us to meet with over 80 highly qualified candidates and applicants that were eager to come here to Fairfax County Public Schools and just met the criteria we needed.
More important to being able to speak the target language is also understanding the culture and being a part of the culture. So each of our teachers here, they're bringing aspects of their culture also into their lessons.
But they are teaching me, too, because they are teaching me their cultures, and you can expand your knowledge in that way. I love that.
In the end, it's a win, not only for London Town, but it's a win for all of our immersion schools, that we are willing to go to find the staff that's needed. So I would say, was the trip worth it? Totally. Not only are they great with their Spanish language, they're elementary certified, they bring with them classroom experience and an intense love for learning, as well as meeting the needs of kids. That's what I needed. That's what I got. Thank you.
As teachers are the core of our mission, seeking, hiring, and retaining the finest educators is the foundation to creating a productive, successful educational environment. Utilizing creative, new ideas in recruitment and hiring provides a means to find tomorrow's great teachers.
Welcome, Dr. Ramey.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present the Goal 3 Premier Workforce Report. Thank you to Matt Gilfoid and his team for the video. It truly does capture two of our exciting strategies we are utilizing to help recruit a premier workforce for FCPS. While I am privileged to be the champion for Goal 3 and speak with you this evening, this work is not done by one individual or even one department. The recruitment, retention, development, engagement, growth, and care of a premier workforce is done by all of us. As Dr. Garza mentioned, I'm mentioned by the HR team this evening, Dee Holly Brown, Michael Drager, Sean McDonald. Michael Drager, Sean McDonald, and Kevin Sills. Theirs team, their teams work endlessly to support FCPS's talented and dedicated employees. Likewise, my colleagues on the LT provide significant leadership and support as we collectively strive to cultivate a highly effective workforce dedicated to ensuring achievement for all students. In July 2015, the School Board adopted Ignite, the Division's strategic plan. The plan encompasses four goal areas, and the administration made initial presentations to the board on each goal during the 2015-2016 school year. Goal 3, Premier Workforce, was presented to the board in November of 2015. Now, just by chance, that's the same night that the board approved my appointment as a new Assistant Superintendent of HR. While I'm thankful you didn't make me give the Goal 3 report last year 20 minutes after my appointment, I'm not only privileged, but also humbled to stand here tonight to share with you information about the tremendous people working for FCPS and who populate our truly premier workforce. Goal 3 includes two overarching strategies. The first of these two strategies is Strategy 8, recruit and retain high-quality employees who are valued, respected, and rewarded for their efforts. Three desired outcomes, which are outlined on the screen, and seven monitoring metrics support this strategy. The monitoring metrics provide the guideposts for tonight's presentation, as we will share information on each of them over the course of the evening. The strategic plan is a living document, and as was shared with the board at the end of the summer, we have updated certain metrics throughout the plan. This is true for Goal 3, and as such, we'll provide data in the update, excuse me, we'll provide data that is an update to information presented last year, but we will also provide additional data points that were not highlighted in last year's presentation. FCPS currently employs more than 28,500 contracted full-time and part-time employees. We have an additional 13,000 hourly and temporary employees that also work for the division. As the slide depicts, we have individuals employed in a variety of positions that all support our students. Collectively, these individuals are the heartbeat of our sys, of our system, and make FCPS a destination school system for students and adults alike. The first monitoring metric for Strategy 8 relates to employee compensation. The School Board and administration have had an ongoing conversation regarding the compensation study since, since December of 2015, when the initial market study information was presented. Additional data was shared in February of 2016, and the information provided a picture of how FCPS pay rates compare to the market. In March, the administration recommended that Division adopt a compensation strategy that FCPS salaries and pay rates be market-competitive, with an emphasis on larger step increases toward the beginning of the scales. With the compensation philosophy in mind, the next step was to begin the work on our recommended pay scales. During July, recommended pay scales for teachers and school-based administrators were presented to the board. These scales emphasized market-competitive salaries and faster career earnings through enhanced movement by employees on the scale. The recommended teacher salary scale is scheduled for a multi-year implementation, and the recommended school-based administrator scale is tentatively scheduled to take effect for physical year 2018. While the work of finalizing the teacher and school-based administrator scales continues, the focus will shift to completing work on the instructional assistance scales, the unified scales, and the development of a differentiated supplemental pay model for our teachers. It is anticipated that initial recommendations surrounding differentiated supplemental compensation will be brought back to the School Board in December, along with an update on the paraprofessional and unified scales. It is anticipated that recommendations will be brought to the School Board regarding the unified scale in early spring of next year, with full or phased implementation beginning as early as physical year 2018. The Board has shown a strong commitment to investing in teacher and staff salaries, and we continue to focus on this work as part of Goal 3. As we move to our next metric, it is levels of satisfaction with employee experience. For this metric, we looked at two data sources. The first was the new employment, excuse me, employee engagement survey, which the Division offered to all contracted employees for the first time in spring of 2016. The results provided a window into areas where the Division is doing well related to employee engagement, as well as into areas where we could focus our efforts. Of note, 77% of FCPS respondents are either engaged or highly engaged in their work, and 88% of employees agree with the statement, "I am proud to work for FCPS." However, there's also room for growth. Providing better recognition of employees could enhance their engagement with the school system, and as less than half of our employees agreed that they receive recognition for their work, and only slightly more than half felt appreciated for their efforts. One strategy that the Division, the Division will embrace in response to the employee voice we heard through the engagement survey is the expansion of our employee recognition program. While we will provide an update in more detail on this topic through Goal 2, caring culture, this is also an important piece of maintaining a premier workforce. The expanded efforts will include a focus on formal, as well as informal, channels of recognition. Also at this time, we'd like to thank the Education Foundation, as it is committed to support these efforts and will continue to help sponsor our annual honors night. We truly appreciate their support in recognizing employees' success. The other data source utilized when looking at employee satisfaction levels is the employee exit survey. The survey has been in use since January 2015, and responses are collected via email from employees that voluntarily separate from the Division. Respondents can select as many factors as they believe impact their decision to exit FCPS. The survey included 16 possible factors, and the top six are reflected on the slide for licensed staff. As with last year, personal reasons followed by salary and pay rate were the top reasons given for separating from FCPS. When we look at the same question for support staff and IAs, the response is very similar. Personal reason and pay were the top reasons given for leaving FCPS for the second year in a row. While this information is being shared as it relates to the employee experience, it is also beneficial as we continue our work on the compensation study and take steps to make sure that FCPS pay rates and salaries are market-competitive. Beyond providing rationale for employees' departures, the exit survey data revealed that 68% of employees that have left FCPS had fewer than seven years of service in the Division. Again, this information is useful as we continue our compensation work. In addition, it ties to our next metric, retention rate for teachers at critical years. But before focusing on our teachers in the first five years of their careers, which research tells us are critical years for teachers, we're providing information regarding our overall teacher turnover. The turnover rate has been increasing slightly over the last three years, and while this is an unfavorable trend, it is still five points below the national average. When we focus on our teachers during their first five years, FCPS is also trending better than the national average. This chart depicts our retention rates for our three most recent five-year teacher cohorts, with the most current cohort represented by the third bar, which is the lightest blue. National research suggests that 41% of teachers leave the profession during the first five years. These rates are represented by the gray bar on the far right for each year. FCPS's retention rate is slightly better than this, as we lost only 38% of our teachers from our 2011-2012 cohort during their fi, first five years, making our retention rate 62% in year five. Now, while better than national average, we still consider losing more than a third of our teachers a significant concern. Work is already underway to reverse these trends as we continue with the compensation study and invest in the teacher salary scale. It is anticipated that the enhancement to the salary schedule will increase teacher retention rates as teachers reach years four, five, and move into the middle years of the salary schedule. In looking at the recruitment and retention of high-quality staff, the next metric we review is higher rates in difficult-to-fill positions and high-need schools, including length of time to fill these positions. For this year, we focused on our project momentum schools, and the information on the slides highlights several strategies that we utilize to connect talented teachers with project momentum classrooms. As you can see, we've created specific, specific events to support hiring of teachers at these schools, but even with these efforts, we still run into challenges in terms of staffing. In order to limit the number of vacancies at the beginning of the school year and move closer to our goal of being 100% staffed in all schools on the first day of school, we have implemented several recruitment strategies and continue to develop more. Several are outlined on this slide and the next, however, I want to highlight three: recruitment trips, hiring events, and early contracts. FCPS has developed strong relationships with several local universities. While we work to maintain these partners, we need to expand our footprint and explore different recruitment opportunities. Rather than simply attend any job fair that we see on the calendar, we're going to make strategic recruitment decisions based on current need, university program strengths, and employee connections and networks. What I mean by this is that we will add recruitment trips to universities and hiring events where the focus is on fields that we identify as critical to FCPS, or to universities that we know have a strength in certain instructional areas. For example, Slippery Rock University has a strong special education program. So Slippery Rock would be on the recruitment schedule with an expressed intent on recruiting special education teachers. Likewise, we will begin leveraging our administrative relationships with universities when we recruit. Recent research on the teaching field shows the numbers, number of individuals entering teaching program has declined by 35% over the last five years, and in 2016, there were less teachers entering the workforce than any of the 10 previous years. We have seen firsthand the increased competition among school systems in recruiting teachers. Last spring, at one university event, FCPS was one of about 40 schools, school districts that had to recruit. The problem? There were only 25 candidates available. So the number of districts looking for teaching talent is outpacing the number of individuals graduating in the field. It's no longer enough to simply show up. We must foster and nurture relationships with schools of education. By leveraging the alumni relationships already in place, we can further our reach at certain schools. We will look to pair administrators to recruitment trips that are slated for schools they attended or have a connection. I always like to use Chief of Staff Marty Smith for this example. Marty went to the University of Iowa. Marty taught in Iowa City Community Schools before he came to Fairfax. It makes sense to send Marty to Iowa to recruit. He not only understands the school and the culture, but he can have a shared experience with the teachers we're trying to bring to Fairfax, and that he knows what it's like to go to a school in the Midwest and come to the East Coast to work. Turns out, I know a little bit about that myself. As building relationships is the core of our work, a personal connection can be a powerful tool in recruiting individuals to join our team. We know that we have individuals that have relationships with fantastic colleges and universities across the country, and we need to leverage these relationships as we maintain and enhance our premier workforce. Coupled with our efforts to go out and find talent is an expanded effort to bring talent to us. We added a late-summer hiring event this past year, which our principals found to be beneficial, and as we look forward to the spring, excuse me, to 2017 hiring season, we plan to add an additional hiring event in May, which would bring the number of FCPS hiring fairs to three. The new May event, and our existing critical fields hiring event in February, provide candidates and principals an opportunity to connect earlier in the process, which is another important factor in recruiting effective teachers. Offering early contracts is definitely an area of focus for us. As this slide reflects, we have done the vast majority of our hiring during the summer. This is simply too late. We need to shift the bulk of hiring to earlier in the season so as to place FCPS in a position to obtain the most effective teachers available. In 2015, the Division offered 39 early contracts. In 2016, we increased this number to 97. While this is an improvement, for 2017, our goal is to offer more than 200 early teaching contracts. We want to provide as many avenues as possible for principals to hire effective teachers, and we feel that early contracts is one of the best tools at our disposal. By utilizing these strategies and others outlined on the previous slides, we are working to reduce the number of vacancies at our project momentum schools, as well as all schools in the Division. This slide reflects the progression of filling vacancies in our PM schools this past summer. However, it also highlights the number of vacancies we had in these buildings, which ranged from six all the way up to 21. As you can see, we still have a handful of vacancies in these buildings, and we're working hard to fill them with effective teachers as quickly as possible. Also feeding into our efforts around recruitment, hiring, and retention is our next metric, number of qualified applicants per advertised position. What we are showcasing this evening is our applicant pool for the different FCPS critical field positions. Overall, the Division had 2,140 teaching vacancies this year. 1,173 of those were in critical fields. This means that approximately 55% of our vacancies for school year 2016-17 were in FCPS-identified critical fields. The number of licensed applicants listed on the far right, in the far-right column, is also key to our work. This year, we had more candidates apply in critical fields than we had vacancies. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that the applicant was available when the building interviewed for the position, or that the, or that the individual was necessarily one we would consider highly effective and qualified for the position. This is another data point that suggests moving the hiring window to earlier in the spring is an, is an appropriate recruitment strategy, as it's a way to provide better access for our principals to a broader and deeper pool of talented teaching candidates. While we're focused on hiring the best teachers and staff members for all positions, we are also conscious of the importance of having a diverse workforce. It is important that we strive to have a workforce that resembles our county population, and that our students see adults that look like them holding positions throughout the Division. While we celebrate all types of diversity, we have looked at our workforce data in terms of racial diversity. This chart reflects the percentage of non-white employees among teachers, school-based administrators, and non-school-based administrators. Additional information is also included in the narrative. We continue to refine our recruitment strategies as to expand our pool to include more diversity candidates as we build and maintain a premier workforce that better reflects the students we serve. Last year, the School Board approved a recommendation that all employees be paid a rate that met or exceeded the living wage of $13.13. I'm happy to report that this year, no contracted FCPS employees were paid less than $13.13 an hour. However, effective October 1 of this year, Fairfax County adopted an updated living wage of $14.50. As you can see on the slide, Arlington County and Alexandria City each adopted a living wage above $14, and these changes envelop those school systems' living wages as well. When looking at our workforce, against the backdrop of the county's $14.50 living wage, we have four employee groups where certain employees are being paid below $14.50. These include custodian one, food service, PHAs, and transportation attendants. It does not affect all employees in these groups, but in total, we will have 1,075 employees paid below the county's newly adopted living wage. We have started to look into the costs associated with bringing all employees to a rate of at least $14.50 an hour, and would cost the Division an estimated $1.5 million. Prior to moving to Strategy 9, I did want to point out several additional initiatives that are connected to a premier workforce. As you can see from this sample, the work of supporting our employees is shared among many offices and departments, and it is intertwined with the other goals of the strategic plan. One of these efforts is My Time. In January 2017, FCPS will launch a new paperless time and attendance system that will allow for the electronic submission and approval of time sheets and leave requests. We have named the system My Time, and it is designed to make the time entry and leave request system more efficient for employees across the Division. While we will share more information during Goal 4, I did want to mention it, as this is a multi-department project and has been ongoing since last winter. We have a dedicated team that has worked nearly around the clock to make this new system a rally for FCPS. Their efforts have been outstanding, and we are currently in the midst of offering trainings for employees throughout the Division. We're excited about My Time, as it'll be a very beneficial tool for our employees, and we look forward to the January launch. I would also like to take a moment to thank our employee associations and advisory groups, as they play a key role in maintaining our tremendous workforce. These employee groups provide great collaboration and serve as significant partners in making not only Goal 3, but the entire strategic plan successful, and we truly do thank them. The second overarching strategy for Goal 3 is focused on growth and professional development. Specifically, Strategy 9 is a focus for the Division to invest in growth and leadership opportunities for all employees by providing meaningful professional development and quality feedback on performance. As captured on the screen, there are two desired outcomes for Strategy 9. Three monitoring metrics provide the guideposts for this work. These metrics identify the areas of focus as performance evaluation ratings, professional development program evaluation, development program evaluation, and employee assessment of PD offerings, PD being our shorthand phrase for professional development. For the first metric in Strategy Nine, we are sharing the evaluation data for teachers and administrators. As the information shows, ninety-seven percent of our teachers are rated as either effective or highly effective. For our administrators, that percentage is just slightly higher, at ninety-nine percent of administrators rated effective or highly effective. In FCPS, the focus and purpose of evaluation is growth and improvement for all of us. For this to take place and for evaluation to be truly effective, the process must be paired with a quality professional development program that is implemented with a high sense of fidelity. To emphasize the importance we place in this area, the division created the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement during the summer of two thousand sixteen. This office will lead efforts in the areas of leadership development and system-wide professional development for the county. As a starting point, the office will conduct a professional development needs assessment during the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. The results of this evaluation will be presented in spring two thousand seventeen. While the analysis is important, the exciting part of the work is the culmination of these efforts into the development of a comprehensive professional development plan for each employee. This outcome is responsive to feedback that FCPS has received from staff. Through the engagement survey, employees provided support for the division's PD programming and noted that training and FCPS-sponsored professional development supported them in their jobs. This positive feedback through the engagement study mirrors individual employment PD program assessment feedback, which we receive from employees through surveys they can access through MyPLT following a training or PD session. As can be seen in the graph, employees have found great value in the PD being offered. The development of a new Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement will enhance these efforts in support of our premier workforce. Now, while not technically an overarching strategy of Goal Three, Dr. Garza did mention that we also provide the annual class size update as part of our report. Elementary class size continues to be an important area of focus for FCPS. To further mitigate large class sizes, the recently adopted elementary class size regulation was revised prior to the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year and provides guidelines for keeping elementary classes below thirty students where possible. In order to meet these guidelines, ten point eight million dollars was added to the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget, and an additional one million dollars was added as part of the FY two thousand sixteen final budget review. When we look at class size, multiple factors are considered before adding additional staff to a building. This work is a collaborative effort between the Region Assistant Superintendent, HR, Finance, and the Building Principal. Support for the staffing process is also provided by Special Services, IT, and Facilities, which punctuates the collaborative approach utilized in staffing FCPS schools. I'd also like to extend a special thanks to Kristin Michael and her finance team as they work in close partnership with HR on these efforts. Our teams do a tremendous job together to support our schools and regions through what can be a difficult and sometimes emotional process. As we look at specific class size information for kindergarten, our starting point is that every kindergarten class is staffed with a teacher and an instructional assistant, and that kindergarten classes should not exceed twenty-eight students. While the provided information shows seven classes above our twenty-eight student cap, class size data was originally pulled on September thirty. Since that date, all but one of the class size concerns has been addressed. The only outstanding class that has more than twenty-eight students is due to a teacher vacancy. As we move from kindergarten to grades one through six, we take a slightly varied approach with regard to class size for grades one through three as opposed to four through six. While the class size cap is twenty-nine for all these, all of these grade levels, we provide instructional assistant for classes that have twenty-eight or twenty-nine students in first through third grades. You can see reflected in the chart that we have seventy-five classrooms that have been provided an additional IA support. The chart also shows that we have five classes in grades one through three and just under seventy classrooms in grade four through six that exceed the class size regulation. There are varying reasons for this, and the regulation has a caveat that will allow the principal, in conjunction with the Region Assistant Superintendent and HR, to decide to keep a class above twenty-nine students. If the principal decides to maintain a class above twenty-nine students, the principal must communicate this to the school community so it is aware of the circumstance. Several of the factors that can lead to classes of thirty or more are captured on the slide. I'd like to note that the five classes in grade one through three are related to a teacher vacancy that we continue to work to remedy. While we do have a small number of classes that have thirty or more students in grades four through six, we have made significant strides since last year. Through the board's investment in class size, we have reduced the number of four through six grade classes above our cap by forty-four percent. While the factors on the previous slide address reasons that we may see classes that exceed the regulation, this information now speaks to why we see different class sizes throughout elementary buildings and across the division. We have a number of elements that impact the configuration of our classes. One of the most basic is that our students don't come to us in equally distributed nice little box sets, right? As much as we'd like them to show up in groups of twenty-five that we can evenly distribute among classrooms, grade levels, and schools, that's just not our reality. One example on this point is that in the same school, you could have sixty-three second graders and eighty-one fourth graders on the school roster. All other factors being equal, the school would qualify for three teachers at each grade level, which would result in three classes of twenty-one students at second grade and three classes of twenty-seven students at fourth grade. The same scenario could play out before, could play out between school buildings. School A could have sixty-three fourth graders while School B has eighty-one. Again, each school, assuming all their factors are equal, would qualify for three teachers. School A would have fourth grade classes of twenty-one, and School B, fourth grade classes of twenty-seven, with all classes within the class size regulation. The scenario is based on looking at only one of many factors we consider, but it exemplifies not only the complexity involved in the staffing process, but also the benefit of the class size regulation. Without the regulation, the schools could have fewer sections but with more than thirty students in each classroom, which is something we work diligently to avoid. We also want to provide a snapshot of the staffing reserve balance. This is a fund we utilize to address class size needs when enrollment exceeds or is lower than the projections used to allocate staffing, to meet unique needs, and to address large elementary class sizes. For this year, reoccurring funding combined with one-time funding resulted in a staffing reserve of four hundred and eighty-one point five positions, which includes teachers and IAs. While the chart provides a staffing reserve balance as of September thirty, we have allocated several additional, additional positions, and the number remaining in the reserve is currently eleven. The staffing reserve is closely tied to our work of Strategy Eight in Goal Three. While we did start the year with a hundred and seventy vacancies, which was actually a fifteen percent reduction from the previous year, many of these vacancies were due to the fact that we also allocated nearly two hundred positions from the reserve since August first to help address enrollment, unique needs, and class size concerns. The staffing reserve is a critical piece for us in assisting schools in maintaining class sizes within the new regulation. Exceptional employees are what makes FCPS successful for students, as well as a tremendous place to work. We are extremely proud of our more than twenty-eight thousand five hundred employees and their daily efforts to ensure that the one hundred and eighty-seven thousand students being served in FCPS schools receive excellent instruction and find academic success. With Goal Three as part of the strategic plan, FCPS is positioned to recruit, retain, develop, and grow a premier workforce that will serve as a catalyst for the success of Portrait of a Graduate. I thank you for your time this evening and look forward to continuing our conversation during Monday's work session. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ramey. I wanted to remind the board members that we do have a work session scheduled for Monday to go much deeper into detail and ask Dr. Ramey any questions then and any comments at that time. Happy to take any questions that board members might have. But, Dr. Garza, did you have any further comments that you wanted to make tonight before? I don't see any hands in the air, but, okay.
No, I had nothing else to add, but we'll have, looking forward to the discussion on Monday.
All right.
Thank you.
Excellent. So I do now see Mr. Moon.
Hey, Madam Chair, I just want to add to that, that Monday work session, we have a ninety minutes allocated to discuss this particular, you know, goal report, and as much as possible, if board members could send in the questions, you know, they may have in advance so that staff can be better prepared to respond, give us all the answers they can on Monday.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and we will see you on Monday, Dr. Ramey.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Item four point zero one, confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make a motion to confirm the recommended action, and I call on Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in the closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section twenty-two dot one hyphen two-five-four, paragraph B, sub-paragraph one.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Palchek, Huff, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Wilson, Darnett Kofax, all opposed, all abstaining, Hines, Schultz, and McElveen. That motion passes. Item five, consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. One item tonight of five point zero one, approval of a school board meeting minutes has been removed from the agenda tonight and will be on the consent agenda at the November fourteenth meeting. Five point zero two, confirm the elected members of the Fairfax County Public Schools' Early Head Start, Family and Early Childhood Education Program, PSEP Head Start Policy Committee is detailed in the agenda item. Five point zero three, approve changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee and as detailed in the agenda item. Five point zero four, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item six, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. Six point zero one, award of contract for the Holland Meadows Elementary School renovation and additions project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Six point zero two, award a contract for the Stewart High School Biology Chemistry Labs' interior renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Six point zero three, approve the recommendation of the Selection Advisory Committee for the Superintendent's search firm. Six point zero four, adopt the resolution approving the two thousand seventeen sale of school bonds, and B, authorize the chairman or vice chairman, with the advice of legal counsel for the school division, to negotiate, execute, and administer the school board tax certificate and all of the documents as are deemed appropriate and advisable, and to do all things necessary to complete the transaction contemplated by the resolution as detailed in the agenda item. Six point zero five, approve the strategic plan, Goal Three, premier workforce report as detailed in the agenda item. We now turn to superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We had a delightful afternoon this afternoon. We had an opportunity to surprise the faculty and staff at Springfield Estates Elementary School. I was joined by Tammy Darnett Kofax. The school has been named an exemplary high-performing school in the National Blue Ribbon Program by the US Department of Education. For those of you that know, this is a highly rigorous process, and it's quite difficult to get this quite distinguished honor. Springfield Estates is one of only seven in the state of Virginia that was awarded this honor and three hundred and twenty-nine in the country. They were recognized for closing the achievement gap among student groups and demonstrating that all students can meet high levels of achievement. It was a wonderful visit and clearly an outstanding school in every way possible. So we extend our congratulations to Principal Mary Randolph and the Springfield Estates team. I was joined by Dr. Lockhart and a number of the members of the leadership team, including Jeff Plattenberg, because, interestingly enough, they just also finished a beautiful renovation of the school. So lots of good things happening at Springfield Estates Elementary School. You also might find it interesting, they're now the fifth FCPS school in total to receive that Blue Ribbon status, so I think it's quite, quite the honor. I also want to thank members of the leadership team and school board who joined me Tuesday as I was recognized by the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. I certainly want to thank Chairman Bulova, Supervisor Smith, and Supervisor Storick, and all the members of the board for their warm, certainly very kind remarks. I was truly humbled by their recognition. And then, one couple of other announcements. Gretchen Haslin, who is the head counselor at Kilmer Middle School, has been named the two thousand and sixteen Virginia State Librarian of the Year by the Virginia Association of School Librarians. Just saw her yesterday at her school. Haslin, who has served as head librarian at Kilmer for ten years, was named Potomac Region Librarian of the Year in the spring. Praised by Principal Ronald James as a respected leader at Kilmer, Haslin is known for her dedication to cooperative learning and teaching. I have visited her library. She's an outstanding librarian. We're very proud of her. Interestingly enough, Kilmer Middle School not only has recognition of a wonderful librarian, but also our Teacher of the Year is at Kilmer Middle School as well. And then one final announcement, forty-two artists, teachers, will be represented by fifty-two works of art in the two thousand sixteen FCPS Artist/Teacher Exhibition, which opens Saturday, November twelfth, at the Workhouse Center in Lorton Station. A reception is scheduled from six to nine p.m. on that date. The FCPS Fine Arts Office partners with the Workhouse Art Center to organize this annual exhibition showcasing the talents and artistic achievements of our teachers. It's a wonderful event, and we have a wonderful partnership with them, and we're very appreciative of that opportunity to recognize the talents of our wonderful art teachers. Thank you, Madam Chair. That completes my comment.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. We go to Board Committee reports, and I call on Mr. McElveen for a report of the Public Engagement Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our last PEC meeting a couple Mondays ago, we discussed the idea of the AAP Summit. We will be bringing that fully cooked idea to the board at our upcoming work session. We also gave feedback on our website, which I think all of us view as a work in progress, and we continue to receive feedback on that, so I would encourage the community to continue to let us have it on that. And then finally, we discussed the issue of informing school board members about events that occur in the community. Sometimes, I think all of us agree that we're left in the lurch and don't find out about things until the last minute, so we're, we'll continue to work on that issue.
I call on Ms. Hines for a report from the Audit Committee.
Thank you. Yes, the Audit Committee met on October twenty-sixth. We updated the audit work plan. We received updates on current audits. The committee also approved a few minor amendments to the FY seventeen audit plan, and I have asked the chair to please put that on a work session in December if possible so we can bring those changes to the full board, because they will have to be approved by the full board. So we appreciate that. There are not, not many, and only one is fairly substantive, so we'll, we'll bring that to the board. The Audit Committee meets again next Wednesday, November ninth, and then again on December fourteenth. There is an audio tape available of the October meeting on the website.
Thank you, Ms. Hines, and I go to Board Matters, and I call on Mr. McElveen.
I would just echo Dr. Garza's kudos for Mary Oska at Springfield Estates. Mary was my first boss, actually, and so it is no surprise to me that, that she has really cracked the whip and really transformed that school into a great place to be. So congratulations, Mary.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was proud to continue my school visits last week, and I was able to visit Twain Middle School with new principal, Mr. Miller, and Claremont Elementary School, and the schools are doing great, and Claremont also just recently finished their renovation, and it looks beautiful. And as Dr. Garza mentioned, I had the pleasure today, visiting Springfield Estates. I did, I was able to join the leadership team and honor them for their recognition as a Blue Label- as a blue label school by the U.S. Department of Education. And then I also went back later this evening for the community celebration, and I was fortunately able to see many old teachers, friends, colleagues, as I was a parent at that school for many years. So congratulations to Mary Randolph and the Springfield Estates team. A well-deserved recognition, and very happy to be with you today.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all the folks who came out to my office hours recently. I will be having additional office hours this month on November 30th at 10:30 at the Chantilly Regional Library, so please come out and keep me company for an hour and a half from 10:30 to 12:00. I also wanted to thank Beth Downey and for inviting me to come to the Fairfax Student Firefighter Academy event held at the Academy this week. It was really incredible to see the students involved. There's 15 Fairfax County seniors from 10 different schools participating in a program that ultimately will lead to their certification as firefighters and possibly joining the Fairfax County Fire Department. So that was really an incredible program and one that I hope we can build on in the coming years, so thank you very much.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I first just wanted to share with my colleagues that I really appreciated the opportunity last night to visit with North Springfield Elementary School at the invitation of their PTSA. Chad McCray is the principal there. They're going through renovation right now, thanks to the support of our Fairfax County citizens and bond renovation. But it was really wonderful to see such a very large turnout of elementary school parents, so very much engaged in the conversation about the fiscal needs of our school system, and just really appreciate those opportunities to see how caring and engaged and thoughtful our parents are in this school system. And I also wanted to share that this Veterans Day, a week from tomorrow, I will have a special veteran in mind, and that is Corporal Jessica Ellis. She attended Canterbury Woods Elementary School, which is in my district, and she gave the ultimate sacrifice when she was killed in Iraq in 2008. She was with the 101st Airborne as a medic. She earned both the Bronze Star and the Purple Heart. She is currently being honored at the Women's Memorial at Arlington National Cemetery, where she's also buried. But if you were to Google Jessica Ellis, or if you were to go visit Arlington National Cemetery, you can see many of the mementos that reflect her service to our country. The Canterbury Woods community is looking at honoring her with a wall plaque so that every day the children at Canterbury Woods can learn about an American hero who was one of the classmates who went through the halls of Canterbury many years ago. Her parents now reside in Oregon, but they are thrilled at the opportunity that their daughter can be remembered and help teach our children just what our alumni in Fairfax County have done in support and fighting for our country. And so, to all of our veterans out there and our families who will be thinking about the veterans and their families a week from Friday, I just wanted you to know that I too will be making sure to really think carefully about how much their sacrifice means to me and to my family and to our community. Thank you for all that you do in keeping us a safe nation and a safe world.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last couple of weeks I've been busy. I met with parent groups at both Centerville and Woodson High School, and also attended a couple of concerts, along with Delia Palczek, representing Providence District. Went to Oakton High School for the orchestra concert. Also last night, I was at, I don't know who else was there, but I was at the Westfield High School for its band concert. But I just wanted to thank and applaud efforts made by Dr. Leavitt's department for the job well done for the Mental Health and Wellness Conference on Saturday at Fairfax High School. It was, you know, parking lot was just packed, and, you know, people were taking really huge benefit out of a lot of, you know, many presentations, very beneficial to everyone who was there. I myself attended a couple of sessions, you know, enjoying the general session, and thank you, Dr. Leavitt, you and your staff have done a wonderful job.
Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. I want to thank the PTAs at Clearview and Franklin Sherman. They invited me to come and speak at their recent meetings. I also want to congratulate the McLean Highlander Marching Band. They are state champions. They won the U.S. Bands Virginia State Championship about a week ago. They also won Best Color Guard, Best Music, Best Overall Effect, Best Percussion, and Best Visual. And last Friday at Homecoming, I was able to see their wonderful performance called "Story of My Life." It was just fabulous. And we hope that the band will come and be honored here at a meeting and perhaps play something for us. Wouldn't that be fun? So congratulations, McLean High School. Thank you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders. Yes, I want to congratulate all of our students in Fairfax County as they conclude their first quarter of the year and wish them a wonderful long weekend. Enjoy. I would also like to encourage the community to provide feedback on the draft calendars that have been posted. This is the first time that Fairfax County has made a recommendation, and we will be starting school next year before Labor Day, so please take a look at those calendars and provide feedback. There is a link on the website. I would also encourage all of our service members that have Veterans Day off to visit the local schools, because we are doing things at each of our local schools, and it's quite an exciting and moving tribute in celebrating the veterans, all of our veterans. And a special shout out to the Travis Mannion Foundation that is working with West Potomac High School on a day of service on Veterans Day. So thank you all. Mrs. F.
Thank you. And on the calendar subject, I have received a lot of emails, and I'm really appreciative of those. It'll be my first time going through the full calendar process, so I love the open feedback as well as people filling out the survey where you can choose one, but I think the open feedback is, to myself, is very helpful, and I'm sure other board members would agree. So keep those coming. And I have office hours coming up this Friday at 12:30 at Richard Byrd, and again in a couple weeks, and more notifications will be going about that. Thank you.
Ms. Palczek.
Yes, thank you. We did have the opportunity to celebrate a lot of achievements this past two weeks. Our Kilmer Librarian is the Virginia Librarian of the Year, so congratulations again to Gretchen. It's great to celebrate with her and her family. I also, like Mr. Wilson, had the opportunity to visit one of our firefighter academy programs. This was at Falls Church High School with a beloved Penny Kelly, and actually firefighter from Prince William County, wanted to check out our program and see what they can do there. So it was great to be there. Also, we did get a chance to celebrate our wonderful retirees and savor the food of Chef Brian, which Mr. Moon especially enjoyed. It was healthy and nutritious, as well as the guitar group. And I do, the Oakton Chamber was amazing. They are also the only high school that will be performing at this year's Virginia Music Education Conference, so we're very proud of them. And our very own Luther Jackson Middle School Director had a world debut of her, the piece she wrote for her students that performed it along with Oakton, so it was a beautiful event. Thank you for joining me, being my date, Mr. Moon. And finally, I had a chance last minute to be able to participate in something that was very touching today. My cousin's wife was naturalized right here in Providence District. I had not been to a naturalization ceremony since my parents several decades ago now. And one of my favorite things about it was that the official, the government official from DC who came out spoke very beautifully and at one point quoted one of my favorite writers, David Foster Wallace, and he said, "Often the most important realities are the ones that are easiest to overlook." So while my cousin's wife will not be able to vote in these elections, it's a little bit too late to register for this year. I do hope that those of us who can will remember that we shouldn't take it for granted. We have very important decisions to make, and our democracy allows us that. So please remember, be educated, get out and vote. There are a lot of issues on our November ballot, and I hope to see you at the polls on Tuesday. Thank you.
Ms. Hines.
Yeah, I was sad but glad to be at Mount Vernon High School's Michael M. Skinner Field House over the weekend for the funeral of Mike Skinner. He died at 92. He was a fixture in that community. I'm a New Yorker, really, born and raised, but I did spend my senior year of high school at Mount Vernon High School, and I was not very happy to be spending one year at another school. But just being there just one year, it's interesting. Mr. Skinner is the only administrator that I remember from that time, and he had that way of connecting with students. And some of the remembrances of him talked about how, you know, you could sort of hear his footsteps down the hall, because he was definitely, as the AP when I was there, you know, they sometimes have the role of the enforcer. And I do remember one story, I hope I haven't already told it, where I must have skipped a class, because Mr. Skinner came and pulled me out of my class to talk to me in the hallway. And I don't know if I was having a bad day, but I just fell apart, and I started crying. I know, and you would think I had broken his heart, because he melted feeling so bad that he had made me feel so badly. And so that's my, that's my memory of Mr. Skinner. And I think it's really, it's an accurate memory from all that I heard over the weekend of his really important role in that community and in that school. He never lost touch with the principal. In fact, you know, he would call pretty regularly to give advice. And, you know, we knew that those relationships are the key of really strong schools, and he was just a walking example of that. I also was able to be out last night at the McNair PTA meeting. I want to thank Kevin Snead, our Director of Many Things, including Design and Construction, who was out there with his team, talking to that community about, you know, the fact that they have, oh, they have two full grades outside in the backyard in quads, and they're just so overbooked, in a way, at that school. And I know that Facilities has tried every possible thing to solve that problem over the last few years, because they've kept me in the loop on what they've been trying to do. And last night, we were able to present a potential solution to the PTA at that school, which is actually, because it's a large piece of property, to build an upper school on the backside of the property and still have a full soccer field and, you know. So I think it's a great plan. We're just at the beginning stages. I was happy to see a good turnout from the PTA, and I know that our Design and Construction folks will do a great job on it, so it's nice to be able to present a solution. It's maybe four years out, unfortunately, but these things take time, but that's a good sign. I just want to quickly, you know, we've had a lot of citizen participation lately, and I just want to mention one thing, and maybe it's something we need to think about. Some of the speakers, and I know that we're very loosey-goosey about making sure that what you say in your citizen participation is related to something on our agenda. That's our rule. It has to be related to something on the agenda. I do think it's important that speakers try to make a credible connection to something on the agenda, and I only mention it, because I know that there are folks who would like to sign up to speak to us about things that are on our agenda, and they haven't been able to. I mean, I know this week I talked to a couple of people, and it's because, you know, the citizen participation, it's only 10 slots, and it fills up pretty quickly on Monday. And so I would just ask citizens that to maybe make an effort to make sure that you're talking about something that's actually on our agenda for the evening. That's our rule. Also, I do know, just to correct a few things that were said tonight, employees were consulted in the development of Policy 1450 and the regulation. They met with employee organizations, and I know that actually, in the development of it, leadership in the school system, including the superintendent, met with those who were opposed to the policy and the resulting regulations. So they were suggesting that the school system has not met with everyone in the community that needed to be heard and wanted to be heard. I think it's not accurate, so.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned, but don't go away.